Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Somers Planning Board February 8th meeting. Joe, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Steve, would you please take the roll?
Chairman John Curry.
Here.
Vicki Gannon.
Here.
Nancy Garbino.
Here.
Jack Mattis.
Here.
Bruce Prince.
Here.
Christopher Zaberto.
Here.
Thank you. Before we start, I just wanted to make one thing clear. We don't usually get these many people coming. I suspect what you're here for. I just wanted to let you know there's no public hearing on the Green Tree Road tonight. We will let everybody know when there is a public hearing, and it's been a policy of this board that there's nobody speaks until there is a public hearing. There's a lot of reasons for that. You're all welcome to say if that's what you're here for. I'm not just, I just didn't want you to think there's going to be time to speak later. There isn't. There will be a public hearing, and you will all be notified. And the second thing, I guess everyone knows now, Planning Board member Dennis McNamara has resigned. He has some health reasons, and he'd like to spend a little more time at home. Dennis goes back from around seventy-nine or eighty when he joined the planning board. He was chairman for several terms. It was, as far as I'm concerned, he was the greatest we ever had. He was always well-prepared, very smart, articulate. He was a great leader. And when I talked to him a couple of weeks ago, I said, you know, I always tried to at least emulate you. If I could be anywhere near as good as you, I'd be very proud. But the problem is, he set the bar awful high. He was a great, great leader in this town, got us through some tough times. And if you're watching Dennis, we're really going to miss you very much. This town owes him a debt of gratitude. He was a great chairman and a great member of the board.
Absolutely. If I could add to that comment?
Sure.
I was a much younger reporter when he became Planning Board member. And he covered the planning board when IBM came in, and it was a seminal moment for this town, which, I mean, I lived in this town. It did not have an architectural review board. It did not have any environmental rules. And we thought, oh, wow, we got IBM, but we got something else, and so did IBM. They built on top of a mountain. And they tore the top of that mountain without any environmental regulations. So half that mountain went into the reservoir system. They ended up being fined, huge fines by the city of New York. And the other half of the mountain went down in our valley on our Route one hundred. And that was what he had to oversee and learn. And we ended up with a multitude of pyramids. Fortunately, we don't see them unless you're going north on Route on six eighty-four. And as a result, his pressure from him and leadership, we got an architectural review board and more control over what things look like. And we also entered into preserving what was left of the good things about this town. And we started paying attention to the environment, and so did IBM. To be fair to them, we were all new at it. I just wanted to say that he led us through the most really critical times of the development of the town.
Mr. Chairman, this is a little unusual because I'm kind of staff to the planning board, but when I was a much younger planner, and I still had a full head of hair, one of my first assignments was working in the town of Somers for a couple of those residential projects, the Meadows and Stevens Green. And Mr. McNamara was on the board, and I was always impressed with his ability, with his, when he came to a meeting, he was prepared. He asked good questions. And I was honored when I came back some years later with less hair to find that he was still working on the board. And I think, you know, the work that you do, and I represent a number of municipalities, but the work that you do as a planning board is a thankless job. It's a community service. And for all the years that you folks and for Dennis, I think it's much appreciated. So I just wanted to say thank you to Dennis for
Yes.
his abilities and service to the town.
Thank you. I think everybody agrees. He was always well-prepared. He was a great asset. We're gonna miss you, Dennis. First on our agenda is the minutes from January eleventh, twenty twenty-three. I'm sure everybody saw a couple of minor changes. So anybody want to make a motion to accept them as they were with the changes?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you for the correction.
Yeah, thank you.
And next on our agenda is the Panny proposed two-lot subdivision at Nineteen Olive Drive. Before we get into it, I just want to double check. Steve, was notice sent to the papers for the public hearing?
Yes, the legal notice is published in the Somers Record on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. The adjoining property owners were notified by mail on January twentieth, twenty twenty-three. And the sign stating the date and location of the public hearing was posted on the site on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. And just for the record, I'll read what that is. It's an application for preliminary subdivision, pre-removal, stormwater management, and erosion sediment control permit, and a steep slope permit for the creation of two lots from one existing lot with a single-family house. And where proposed access to a new lot is only available from an unimproved but map town road. It's in an R ten district, and the actual location is, like I said, Nineteen Olive Drive. Evening.
Good evening, John Correll, representing Mr. Panny on a two-lot subdivision. This, you've seen this before. We worked with the fire department to work out the hammerhead terminus of the road. And it seems to be everybody's satisfied with that. We've added stormwater practices. We're collecting the roof water and putting it into infiltrators. We're collecting water off the driveway and putting it into two rain gardens. And we're proposing a berm below the rain gardens and the septic systems to further assure that no water or no significant water goes to the properties below. We are reducing the amount of water that's going onto the properties below. I mean, that whole lot drains to the properties below, and we're reducing the amount of water that's going down with the rain gardens and the infiltrators. And then the lawn areas we're gonna, is gonna further reduce the amount of water. The soils are very good there, very good for septic system. They're very sandy soil. Rain that falls on that property is most likely going to completely infiltrate into the ground before it gets to the rain gardens.
Dave, I'm sorry. Anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay. Dave, you have any comments? Steve?
Yep, the applicant has addressed most of our engineering comments from our prior comment letter. The version of the site plan that the applicant, the engineer have presented here differs slightly from that which was provided to Planning Board Review. It's the product of some back and forth between us as engineers refining some of the elements of the site plan to meet code for the stormwater aspects. So this, this version of the plan that's on the board here, the planning board has not yet reviewed. We do have some, some minor open questions, some details that need to be provided in a full plan set around velocity management of stormwater and just some of the sizing calculations. But Mr. Correll's aware of those comments, and they're summarized in our last letter. The, right, so those comments relate to the erosion and sediment control details and some details on the pretreatment to the rain gardens.
Okay.
Those are our comments.
Is there any board member comments before I open the public hearing? No? Okay, um, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this application? Would you just come up?
To the podium?
To the podium. Say your name once again for the secretary, please.
Yeah, my name is Charles Signarelli. I live on Eight Peach Road. My property and my well backs up to their property. I've been there for forty years. And I, when they did the footprint on the old cottage that was there and all the trees that were taken down, now I even got more water on my property. I have pictures of it. My well is too close on the uphill side. They need two hundred feet from my well, and there's no way they're gonna get it. I lasered their their existing, where it said there's septic limit lines that were within a hundred and forty and a hundred and sixty feet from my well. And the same with Mrs. Smith's. I lasered hers also. Hers is even closer on their last limit line from one of the septic fields. Also, there's an underground stream that runs between, goes through the bottom of my property and comes out between Tommy Tuma's property and Dante Duran's property. And that water also empties into the Beaver Brook, which runs into the Muscuit Reservoir. So that could be an issue also. Like I said, I'm there for forty years, and they tried to approve this lot before, and it was turned down over the years. They couldn't get, I actually had an engineer knock on my door and ask me if he can measure from my well, and he did all of that. And he didn't think that the property was able to build houses that close. It's very narrow. If you came and look, I have pictures of how the slope goes up from my property where my well is, which is only about ten feet off of their property line. And then they had an existing well in the old of, I don't know if it's the same blueprint, showing that their well was only about twenty feet off of my well, and that would interfere with my well digging bad enough with all the trees that they took down, that I have more water coming onto my property. I think it's, you know, I've been around construction all my life. My father was a builder. He worked with Louis's father over the years. And back in Mayapack in the day, they used to do things that was off the charts. Can't do that anymore. And what I see is going on, it's not going to cut it on my end because I have an environmental engineer that'll work with me, and I also have a lawyer that'll work with me to fight against it because I don't think, there's no way they can put two houses in there. One, I don't even think one. So, you know, I, like I said, if it was your backyard, how would you feel? All of a sudden, you're gonna have two four-bedroom houses in Lincolndale. I mean, there's not, it would be the biggest, they're huge, behind my house. I mean, I just, it's not right. As a forty-year taxpayer in the town of Somers, I also own two businesses in the town of Somers for from nineteen seventy-eight till two thousand before I went to work for Fordham University. So I have, if you want to see the pictures, I have pictures.
Yeah, if you would just leave it at the table over there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
This was, these were taken on last April. You can see the new house that was just put in there. And you can see the water coming. I never had water come from this side of the property, not coming from there. And this is the water, how it comes into that. And that was last spring. It wasn't that bad. We didn't have a good snowpack or anything like that. Usually sometimes my well will fall from the top of the mountain. Or it's right on the property line there.
And this here is the property line.
The property line, yeah, behind it. You can see the, another picture I took tonight. I took a couple of pictures tonight, too.
How deep does your well go, sir?
Huh?
How far down is your well dug?
About a hundred and sixty feet.
And your, your property is graded higher than this well property?
Lower, much lower, yeah. It's like about from, from the top of his property, I would have to say it's about eight feet down below his property. Yes, my well now, this is, tonight you see the morning, the water's starting to come off because we had the warm weather. And that's, that's tonight. That's where my well is. And you can see the grade going up. It's a deep grade. It's sheep-like, very. And this is, this was his plan here. This is where one of the proposed houses is. My house is here. My well was right on his property line. He was gonna put a well right there. I mean, that's ridiculous. I mean, come on. I'm sorry, I, we, it upset me when I seen that well right there. I said, you know, you know how expensive it is. I had to pull my pump out twice because, you know, things have eroded and pipes break in. It's expensive, you know? I don't need to have to build another well.
So your concern is that the installation of the new well will damage yours?
Yeah, of course. It definitely will. I wrote a letter. I had a letter sent. I talked to ecological, I talked to a geological engineer, a wellologist. And I sent this letter on the first time. It was trying to get it approved. And I also have a this time.
It's, but you know what?
Actually, it was the letter I sent when the first time when they were gonna start the subdivision. Just because it was last, the date should be on, it's a copy of it.
Yeah, that's.
Was that a different project?
I just don't see.
I sent the letter.
No, no, this, this letter was addressing a different project?
No, no, no. Well, the same project. They were trying to get it approved before they did that footprint. And I spoke a little bit about it. And when, when did you send this letter?
It's not dated.
The original, the original submission, which was what, two years ago?
A couple of years ago.
Yeah.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah. So there's nothing, there's no record on this particular application?
Well, this, this application has been open for a couple of years.
Okay.
And the applicant's been working through some of the turns. Would you mind resending that letter as well?
Sure.
So that, just so it has a date on it and it's for the record?
Yeah, no problem. No problem. You, you, you want to keep them?
I'm sorry. Let me, if you want to send them all at the same time?
Okay.
Not that way. I don't want to take your records.
Okay, no, I have copies, so.
Whatever's convenient for you.
Yeah, if you want to, you know, you can have these.
Sure. I noticed that you have some handwritten notes on the other one, so I don't want to take.
I think for the record, it would be best if you submitted a copy of all the materials, show the current, you know, a current letter, and maybe send a copy to the applicant, too. Okay. So this can be addressed properly.
You got it.
Chairman.
That's exactly, one of the reasons for public comment is for things exactly like this, you have something that you want addressed and taken care of, and now it's the applicant's duty to respond to that, and they have to answer your, your, your concerns.
Right.
It's just better for the, for the overall project if you officially enter it into the record for this project. This is a new iteration.
A new.
Yeah, a new submission. It's kind of a new docket number, if you will. And so any documents that come pursuant to the plan as presented now.
Right.
It will be entered into record, and then we have access to it. It'll be distributed accordingly. And then we can review it, all of us at once, discuss it if need be. And then we can get comments from the engineer. And so all of that would be beneficial to ensure that we are.
I just, I just, I just want to say that, you know, I'm concerned. It's, it's, it's it really close.
We, we hear your concerns.
We've seen what I'm talking about, and it, that's, it's tough. It's not, it's not like thirty years ago. This is now. I mean, things are different.
Nancy even gave a little history about that, right? Thirty years ago, this, we wouldn't even be here discussing it. There'd be two houses behind your house.
When I bought my house, I dealt with Amiel. He was my building inspector. And I did everything he wanted. And it was, it was tough, and I got it done, you know? So, like I said, I just, and I'm concerned not only for me, but also for Mr. Smith, because my property is very, very close also. And our well is very close to their last septic limit line. Sir, you said you had an engineer involved in this. Right. He should be writing some material, too, and submitting along with this. I will. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any photos that you submit, could you make sure to have like a descriptive caption? So.
If you want them now, I can.
No, that's, when you send them to us digitally, include a description labeling the significance of each one.
Right.
So it's not up to our imagination to understand it.
Okay.
Because it's one thing for you to tell Steve here, but we're all gonna get a copy of it. So yes, that'll help. Thank you so much.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? I'm pretty sure I can speak for the board. We'll probably hold the public hearing open so this gets addressed. Okay.
Yes, we can't close.
Can I ask a question? What is, what's the distance, what's the distance between the two, the two wells, the existing well and the proposed well?
Probably twenty, twenty or twenty-five feet. I mean, you can put a well, the well has to be ten feet from a property line. So if you have two properties next to each other, the well can be twenty feet, the wells can be twenty feet apart. Ground, there's a significant supply of groundwater in that area.
Yeah, has the gentleman had any problems with his well drying up or not being able to get water?
I said twenty-five. I said twenty-five.
We're not going to get into back and forth. This, this is, this will get answered by the applicant and on our consulting engineer.
Okay.
So we're gonna keep the public hearing open.
Okay.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a project review for the Michael Perilli and Nicole Stern proposed subdivision of a parcel adjacent to the Green Tree Road. It's on town map fifteen dot twelve dash two dash one and fifteen dot twelve dash two dash five. And for the record, it's a proposed preliminary subdivision in open development area, application for subdivision of two parcels into three residential lots, access off of Green Tree Road through the town right-of-way and New York State Department of Transportation Eastman areas. The property is in an R eighty zoning district. For the record, I also read last, at the last meeting, some current emails that we received. I want to read the latest list. And please forgive me if I butcher your last names. John Alinda Mongelli, Derek and Joe Marie Mounsey, Maureen Freel, Jennifer Clea, Bill Rothschild, Donald Gambino, Joni Stoffey, and Alan Mahoney, and Joanna Sandola Esquire. Those were all emails, just currently. After we hear an update from you, I think it would be worth it to have our town planner just explain for the public that are here and for the public that may be watching at home what our job to do is from this point forward, and then how it proceeds to the town, et cetera. So if you want to give a brief overview and then.
Sure. My name is Peter Scott. I'm a heart-train engineer representing an applicant today. Just for the record, Tommy Racic, who's sitting next to me, has purchased the land. So basically, he is the current owner of the property.
Could you use the mic, please?
Oh, you gotta go to the mic. To the podium? Yeah, yeah. Need to broadcast. Or take the mic with you.
Yes, so sitting beside me is Tommy Racic, and now he's become the owner of the project. He was the contract BND, and there were some issues addressed by some of the neighbors about the past owner. But Mr. Racic is a builder, and he has a very good reputation. And again, he'll address any issues that the town might have both during approval process and during construction. So with all that said, we've been kind of busy on this project. So what we did is we went to the Bureau of Fire Prevention, and we have an approval on the plan for fire safety and access to the lots with fire truck access. The only issue that we had amend the plan with was a small pull-off area for lot number two so that the fire truck that arrived at lot number two could, could back up and leave the site. Everything else was approved by them with a plan. They have a lot of signage recommendations. We've provided a plan which has identified all the signs they want. They basically consist of private entry signs, a road name for the, for the property to, to, to meet the nine-one-one code requirements. And they have also no parking sign would be on this common area of the driveway so they would not curtail any fire truck access should an emergency take place. And I submitted the plan for the file. We also basically submitted to the DOT for the bike trail. We haven't received comments. We did provide you a plan of the enhancements required for our crossing. And again, signage which is required by the DOT for crossings of the roadway. That's currently under review by them. We also went to SHIPO, which is for historic analysis of the property. We received a letter back from them saying that we did not have any proposed or potential impacts to historical nature of the property by developing the site. It was an issue that was brought up by one of the neighbors. We addressed it already, and the SHIPO letter is in the file as well. The property has pretty much remained as we discussed earlier. The map before you has highlighted some issues or conditions of our submission. The red line, of course, is the wetland lines. The light brown area is the grasscrete porous concrete driveway in an area adjacent to the wetlands. We've put rain gardens in to treat the, any potential stormwater from these pervious concrete paving. We did propose tree scapes on the common property line between the right-of-way we have and the adjacent neighbor, Thomas Eddy. And then we placed them on, we placed those trees on the property line so that basically they're either, no one, no one can cut them down. The property line would be in the middle of the tree. We've also basically provided plans which show the stormwater management. It consists of each individual lot has a sediment basin and a bio-retention basin for treatment. We've given you all the Westside County Department of Health test data, which was accomplished by us. We have a rain garden, which collects all the runoff on the roadway. We have a tension basin also proposed for the stormwater management. In terms of attenuation, the rain garden is for treatment. We're also proposing a one-point-six-acre parcel, which would be potentially donated to the town of Somers, since you have lands of town of Somers, which are landlocked from your bike trail. And so we're proposing one-point-six acres here. And again, the acres of the lots are two-point-four-four, two-point-two, and like three-point-four acres in size. We far exceed the requirements of your ordinances. We received a recent memo from the town engineer basically consisted of phasing, a phasing plan, which we'll propose and present to you at the next meeting. And we have some minor EAF issues we have to address. Basically, we have to make, we have to give you a list of scenic resources in the town of Somers, which are close, which are close to this project. And we came up with a list. Elephant House is closest. Then we have Lake, Lincoln Dale. And then we have one more within five miles is the Old Stone House on Old Route one hundred. Those are, those are the three scenic components in the town of Somers, which are within five miles of our project. But to stress where we're at, this is at the end of the Green Tree Road. The property to the north is undeveloped forest land. The land to the west is also undeveloped lands as well. And this, again, this is a town of Somers land. And there's more town or Somers land in this area as well. So we're kind of isolated within a treescape in that particular area. And I think that's about it for tonight.
Before Dave speaks, I just want to reiterate one more thing. Anytime you want to add written comments for the public, public comment, that is never closed. So anybody that wants to add any more public comments that way, we absolutely would accept them. But right now, there's no public hearing per se, like we just had for the last application. Dave, would you just, what we talked about before, please?
So the, the application before the board is for a subdivision, and it's a little bit unique in that the applicant is applying under New York State Town Law two eighty-eight for properties that don't have kind of direct access to a road or a town road or a public road or right-of-way. So there is a prescribed process that needs to be followed. Your, the planning board is in the midst of that process right now. The first part is for the planning board to do an environmental evaluation under the state environmental quality review laws. The applicant has submitted a Part One of the full environmental assessment form, which begins kind of the basis for evaluating the environmental impacts. The applicant has received comments on that. The applicant has received comments on that along with others from uh, Mr. Robbins and others, other interested and involved agencies. So as part of um, your review, uh, you need to uh, evaluate the uh, potential environmental impacts as they may be uh, as identified by the part one. And then in the, the, the package that I provided to you, there is the uh, the full environmental assessment form, part two. And there are a whole series of, I think there's eighteen different impact categories. Um, and it's part of your charge to review each of those impact categories to, to evaluate whether identified impacts, they may even small or negligible, or whether they may be moderate or large. And depending upon your determination, you would then file what's called a part three. And you would file an environmental determination, either a negative declaration, which means that there are no significant adverse impacts, or those impacts that have been identified have been mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. Or uh, there are significant adverse impacts as identified by uh, the environmental review and that the applicant would need to prepare an environmental impact statement. So uh, that, that's kind of the, the initial part of the environmental review process. When you get to that determination, um, at some point you will forward uh, the environmental review along with any other recommendations to the town board. So the town board under New York State Town Law two eighty-eight has to um, entertain and approve what's called an open development area. That essentially allows for um, uh, this property for the, for a building permit to be issued uh, for these proposed three homes. Uh, because there is no direct access to a, a town or municipal road or right of way. So once the town board um, conducts that review and that application, if they approve in the affirmative, then it comes back to uh, the planning board. There would then be a public hearing on the preliminary subdivision approval uh, proposal. And that's when um, the public would be provided an opportunity during the formal public hearing process. So that provides a summary of, of the process of the uh, the, the items that you would, uh, that you are reviewing as part of your due diligence.
Thank you. So I, I hope that gives you all a little bit of a timetable of where we are in this process. We're, I guess we're uh, if golf technology terminology, we're probably on about the fourth hole.
If that.
If that. Steve. Let's see all of them and then we'll talk. I'll say, let's hear. Sure. Steve.
Thank you. Um, yep, our, our comments on this last submittal, um, there are a number of comments just for consistency among the various documents. The EAF, the submitted plans, the plans uh, subsequently reviewed and approved by the Board of Fire Protection. Just all that needs to come together uh, cohesively and, and the applicant's aware of that. The uh, you mentioned scenic resources. Um, the town zoning map also does identify Mayapack Avenue, just for completeness on that. Could you talk a bit further about the access drive, the materials of construction? Uh, and why those were chosen?
Well, I'll speak about, I'll speak about it. There's, there's separate drawings to that as well, but I'll keep it kind of general. So uh, what we have is uh, in the area of a wetland, uh, we cannot um, have impervious material uh, based upon the New York City DEP guidelines. Uh, and so to mitigate that, we use something called grasscrete, which is a lattice of concrete with gravel voids in the middle. And it's used as a mitigation device for putting uh, access roadways near wetlands. Uh, and we've been very successful in using them in uh, several in Yorktown, North Salem. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a uh, approved uh, option for basically uh, creating a uh, a traversing or an access way to uh, a pass a wetland itself. Uh, and basically, even though this property was once at one time or still is a right of way for a uh, for a uh, a town road. Uh, once the bike trail went through, uh, it prevented its extension then to our subject property. And, and, and once we leave uh, through the uh, right of way that exists, uh, we have to cross uh, the uh, an easement or actually a land ownership by the State of New York, which constitutes the bike trail. And through that, uh, we have a uh, an easement uh, filed for this particular property uh, to utilize that as a crossing. The right of way, it turns out, was improved to actually contain a road because we've done some test borings. And we've hit um, a bank run gravel at a depth of six inches. And then we have about eighteen inches of a bank run. And then below that, we've got uh, rock uh, stones. So when they built the, uh, your Green Tree Road, they kept, they built the entire subbase for it. Uh, so we have a pre-built uh, foundation for the roadway itself. Uh, and it's extremely dense, uh, because just for, we had to put a sign in it just recently and you couldn't even dig through it. We had to really work hard to penetrate that layer. So it's, so it's been sitting there compacting for about uh, whatever the amount of years, thirty years, probably forty years. But there are some tree penetrations through it. And we'd have to repair those by removing the trees and the stumps when we got to that point in construction and repair those particular areas. So uh, in, in addition to the grasscrete, we have a curb proposed of concrete on the edge of the uh, of the proposed uh, accessway. And that, that serves as a, as a drainage curb, which brings a water in the roadway uh, to a uh, a rain garden we're proposing in the area. Technically speaking, though, uh, the uh, grasscrete is a pervious material and the water is percolating into the ground. But as a belt and suspenders position on this project, we also added in curbs to catch any larger storm events and treat them as well with our, our, our rain garden in this one particular area. But typically in, in a grasscrete environment, the water would percolate into the ground, especially because of the uh, bank run that we found below the uh, the current surface, below the current, uh, topsoil that's there now. The, the other item uh, is uh, once we cross the roadway, uh, we have a uh, a bike uh, trail crossing plan, which has been submitted DOT for this application. Uh, and we've described various components on it, uh, which consist of a work zone plan and a construction plan. Uh, and what we're doing is we're providing uh, our, our grasscrete uh, extends up to the access to the bike trail. We have rumble strips on both sides, which are five feet wide and are basically granite uh, blocks, Belgian blocks. Uh, and that basically gives, it does two things. It kind of slows traffic down because no one wants to fly across that. Uh, but also it, it, it creates an audible um, event which can be detected if you're on the roadway itself. On, on the bike trail itself. There's also extensive signs and stop lines and, and all sorts of signage, uh, which is uh, typical of what's been approved on other crossings on the bike trail. The but process proposal we have also includes a picket fence along the edge of the uh, proposed driveway. And beyond that, that is to the south, uh, we have a uh, a proposed grass uh, a grass area to which we're going to add mulch. So we're first going to build it with a grass cover and we'll add mulch to that to make a dedicated uh, bike trail. Uh, pardon me, a walking trail to the bike trail uh, from the cul-de-sac. And beyond that, we're proposing some pressure treated uh, boards along the edge of this trail to, to prevent a migration of the trail. Uh, because unfortunately, when you, when you have mulch on a surface and people are walking on it a lot, it seems to move around a lot. So we're putting a, a pressure treated uh, uh, a wood line, wood uh, curb extending on the south side. So the mulch won't move uh, to the south uh, over prolonged use. And then the other side of it, again, as I stressed before, we have a curb line. And uh, in that, with the, with the fence we have proposed, uh, the bottom eighteen inches of the proposed uh, picket fence uh, has a wire mesh on it uh, to prevent um, uh, any accidental movement of say a dog or something to, to traverse from the trail onto the roadway. So it's a, 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 a green uh, a, a mesh fence would be below uh, on the bottom part of the uh, of the fence. And that's on the drawing set. That's, we have details out of that on a drawing set. So that's how we're handling both the uh, accessway and the crossing. Once we go, once we go beyond the crossing, we're proposing that this roadway become paved uh, and uh, and as depicted in the gray coloring before you, uh, we're, we're just paving all the uh, the roadway because that was a recommendation by the Fire Bureau of Fire Prevention that they wanted, they wanted us to be on um, on, on a paved surface. Uh, and all of our stormwater management is so designed to treat that to uh, the appropriate New York State DEC levels of um, of both attenuation uh, and uh, treatment itself. And that's the extent of it.
So um, thank you. That, that's helpful, I think, for the, the board to understand because it is complex. It's probably the most complex area of the site. Um, and the most environmentally sensitive area of the site from a an erosion and, and wildlife standpoint, um, being in that, in that wetland buffer. So you're, you're not proposing any disturbance to the wetland itself, correct?
No, we're not. We're, we're close, but we're, we're not.
The um, it, these are, are a bit more site plan related comments than, than environmental impact comments here, but uh, some, some better best management practices uh, for curving in that area might be a Cape Cod curb as opposed to a more vertical curb just to allow for uh, you know, better transit of amphibians in that wetland buffer.
Fine.
Keep it from getting trapped in, in that roadway section. Um, can you uh, submit uh, for our review, some of that geotech information on that roadbed that that really helps clarify some of the comments that we had about the CE soils that are in the soil survey in that area and how this will uh, hold up over time.
Correct, yes.
Our other major comment uh, is that the town code does require uh, mitigation for disturbances in wetland buffers of this nature. Um, it's been the, the past practice of this board uh, and in our review, not to consider stormwater management that's, that needs to be put in to manage uh, the, the road service um, in that area as that wetland mitigation. So there's probably some additional development of project detail that needs to happen around that. Uh, and, and the town code does stipulate some additional information that needs to be provided to justify um, the proposed mitigation. So granted, you're, you're tight.
Yes, I was going to bring that up. Um, yeah, we're willing to put whatever we can uh, in, in another project. We've gone to wetlands and taken out the barberry and other invasive species as a mitigation device. Uh, we'll propose a uh, an overall plan. Uh, but uh, as stated, as so stated, uh, we are within a very tight uh, right of way and the wetlands are to our south. So any mitigation has to be uh, unfortunately would be in the wetlands here. Uh, and we did plant in this area, but we can, we can, we'd be more than happy to do off-site mitigation as well if we had to.
There, there is the, the parcel down below. That's all part of the same tributary. Uh, sorry, on the west side of the trail, the, the parcel that you are considering.
Yes.
There, I mean, the, the slopes around uh, that drainage are, are a lot tighter. So the type of mitigation would be a little bit different, but you have some options there too. So that, that needs to be just identified and quantified as part of the EAM process for the board's consideration.
Yes. So that.
Those are my comments.
Answer.
Two, two points, uh, two questions. The first one is one I mentioned at our last meeting. And that is um, where, what are you doing with the garbage containers for the three homes? Where are they going?
Uh, I, I, I have a, a blow up of this area on the, on the plan set. We're putting the dumpsters right here.
Dumping it at the end of the driveway for everybody else on Green Tree to look at from three homes.
Oh, no, they're actually, they're actually can, well, they're contained within vinyl uh, enclosures. We have plants of that.
Closure.
Yes.
Them to look at vinyl.
Yeah, it's a, it's a standard process.
View of the people who live on Green Tree so that your people don't have to look at their own garbage.
I'm actually adding plants around them as well. We have a mitigation plan of plantings. So we have, we, not only do we have a, a dumpsters enclosure, but we showed, uh, we're, we're planting, we have a planting plan to mitigate the uh, the visual impact of the uh, dumpsters.
And who takes care of that over the years? You don't.
Well, that would be part of the homeowner, homeowner's agreement for maintaining the roadway because they have to maintain that as well. Yes.
What was the uh?
I have another question.
Sorry.
My second question is, have you contacted the Yorktown Post Office to find out where they want these houses' mailboxes to go? Are they also going to be dumped at the end of Green Tree Road for these people to look at?
Well, what I did.
Visual impact, you realize.
Yeah. So what we're doing is.
Pretty for your three homes.
Well, what I was hoping to do is I was going to try and make a uh, a, we, we have a plan where we sort of incorporate into one element protected with uh, plants on all sides. And we integrated this, the, the mailboxes into the enclosure. So it's one, we're not putting isolated little boxes all over the yardway.
You need approval from Yorktown, whatever it is you're doing.
Yeah, I, I can definitely contact them. We have no problem doing that. I have a plan here. Hold on. Let me find it, excuse me. This is a picture of what the enclosure would look like. Uh, as I'm drawing SY six.
And where does it go?
I have another plan. Too many plans. On SY two A, we showed the, this is a blow up of all the plantings we have proposed in that area. And we basically have uh, the uh, the dumpsters are located here. Uh, and then we have a mailbox is uh, right in front of it as well, on the right-hand side of the roadway. Because the left-hand side, we have a trail there. So basically we were, we were going to make a uh, a planted area in this, at this location uh, to, to, to basically have and um, assist in having the uh, garbage trucks not traverse through the property. Uh, we were trying to address that issue, uh, but the road is adequate to handle uh, garbage truck entry.
Certainly is capable of handling. I mean, garbage, uh, Grand Springs is a good example about truck crossings. We have a business there where multiple trucks cross regularly on the bike tra, I'm a user.
Yes.
Since nineteen fifties, when it was a railroad, all up to now of, of that byway, or whatever you want to call it now, a bike path. But um, I, I see nothing wrong with the garbage truck visiting those three homes. I really don't understand.
Uh, I was just stressing, there's other comments we had in the past about having the trucks cross, but we don't have any problem putting it there either.
I was to be fair, we said that on the planet, on the walk.
We, we did. And I, I was the one that brought that up. My, my concern is that since the town does not have centralized garbage pickup, there's the potential for three individual independent garbage trucks to cross that twice a week.
Yes.
And then so my, my question to you at the time that this was brought up was how can we mitigate that risk of having extra truck traffic crossing the trailway?
Yes.
And the proposal that you had come up with was to move and make it the homeowner's responsibility to carry the garbage out to the end on the, on the other side of the trailway. Same with the post office, I'd imagine, so that the postal trucks and the Amazon trucks and all of this truck traffic. And that was done to help satisfy the safety, uh, in my opinion, on the trailway itself. Now, there's clearly an aesthetic issue, which Nancy brought up. And if you can properly address the aesthetic issue.
Sure.
I think that, I think we can find a good balance with this.
Yeah, we're, we're.
Owners on Green Tree, but as well as the users of the bike trail to limit the amount of vehicular traffic.
Yeah. By the way, the most dangerous thing on the bike path, for your information as a heavy user of the thing, are bikers. Not garbage trucks.
I saw that.
He is going to agree with that.
For the record, I was struck by a bicyclist while we did the sidewalk uh, on the trailway itself.
And it didn't stop.
And it didn't stop. That's true.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Bruce.
The um, can you determine, I'm, I'm a little confused. How much of this is a, a private roadway and how much of this is a town roadway? Or is there any town roadway?
At this point in time, there's no town roadway. It's a, it's a private road, being maintained by the three house sites.
From, from the cul-de-sac all the way back?
That's correct.
Okay. Have you investigated the ability of plowing grass, concrete? Areas? Because sometimes when you're plowing that kind of. Material, they tend to come up unlike concrete, un- unlike blacktop roads. Because.
Yes, we're, we're very familiar with it. We've done everything from large industrial projects. Commercial projects are plowed all the time. I, I can give you a list of examples of buildings we've built utilizing a system. And, and they're very durable. In fact, they're even more durable than asphalt. Because the voids are able to cushion the, the blade impact between the, and these are heavy. Poured in place, octagonal shapes of a, of a diameter of about twelve inches included dimensions. They're big, heavy structures, mount, floating on gravel.
I'm familiar with the, with the structures. Just concerned about the plowing. And the other thing, the, the care of those, though, that road. Is that gonna be the responsibility of those homeowners?
Yes, it is. We, we have a, a, a program that we, we use in other projects. We're gonna introduce that into, into the plan set on requirements. And typically with these type of operations, you know, we have an annual inspection. By either a, a town authority or an authorized representative to ensure maintenance takes place. And we, we have legal documents of similar nature, whereas a homeowner's agreement, which are dated. Recorded through deeds on each of the lots to make sure that, that we, they're being maintained.
They're gonna make, they're gonna maintain their driveway. They're gonna plow across the, the trailway. And then they're gonna try, plow across the, the, the concrete. Uh, grass, concrete. Up to the, the cul-de-sac. Is that what you're planning?
Uh, well, it's a K turn area, but, so when we, when we got approvals from the Bureau of Fire Prevention. Who provided a, a, a map that depicted snow disposal areas for the plowing. And we also have a program that they required that we had to put in markers in the winter time and maintain. The open nature of the roadway for fire safety access. And it was part of the, that was part of the agreement that we were granted, including those components. So we have snow disposal areas already designated.
You, 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 you made different references to the garbage areas for these. Three houses. Are they just gonna be, are they gonna be a enclosure? Which will hold regular garbage cans? Or are they gonna be something more elaborate than that?
Well, they're holding, they're just holding garbage cans, but I made them a little bigger. I think they're like four by five feet. Uh, just because we don't want to have any potential issues with X, something, somewhat, something, somehow exceeding. The capacity of a small container. Uh, and I, and if by, by myself tying them all together into a component. Uh, it gives it more rigidity, more safety and security. So that's what we're implementing with the plan we have.
No, I, that's, that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's a good idea. That's what we've done. That's what we do in Heritage Hills, where we have six homes going into, like, six different gar-. Six garbage cans that are in, 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 uh, garbage can, garbage containers. I, I don't think that's, that's that unsightly in operation, especially if you plant around them.
Correct.
I'm gonna object to that when you're done, Bruce.
Go ahead.
Yeah, garbage is a bit contentious. Yeah. Okay, Bruce, are you done?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, um, so first. To the initial concern, I guess, of having three separate trucks doing three separate pickups. Um, would it be possible to require that an H O A contract in coordination? Under the terms of the approval and that they have to agree on one company and they can't.
No problem.
Okay.
Here, here.
Yes.
Second. Even with that. I, I live in the real world. If you have garbage pickup. You're going to have residents who want to throw out things that are quite outside and beyond. What they have really contracted to have picked up.
Correct.
And they're gonna put them nearby, proximate to leaning on the container. With the hope and fingers crossed that the people taking it away will actually pick it up and take it away. And I think that to ask people who live nearby.
To look at it.
To look at it.
Here, here.
And to not have the people whose garbage it is, have it be in their line of sight. I just don't think that's appropriate. And to Bruce's analogy. Of trash cans at Heritage, yes, I live at Heritage and the trash cans are pretty much, there's so many of them. Enclosures, they're all within all of our line of sight. So it's, it's, I don't think it's really totally analogous to that. So also, another thing I'd like to say is that. I remain concerned about the amount of. Traffic and impact and people that this will bring to the cul-de-sac. Clearly, you contemplate people coming because you're providing a trail to lead across it. So I, I find that concerning. Also, can, can I ask some questions about the E A F itself? Thanks.
Sure.
So, and maybe I've missed something. But, um. Page three, C three zoning. I just feel like this is incomplete and it asks, you know, is the site of the proposed action located in a municipality with an adopted zoning law ordinance? Yes. If yes, what is the zoning classification, including any applicable overlay district? But the question isn't answered. So whatever the zoning is, that needs to be answered. And I didn't see that on Steve's punch list, so. Also. And I'm not an expert, so I could have missed something here. Also. On page five of thirteen, and this is D under, um. Project operation, so D two is project operation, so sub D under that. Will the proposed action generate liquid wastes? The check mark says no, but then underneath it, it says total anticipated liquid waste generation per day. I'm sixteen hundred gallons.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're using subsurface sewage disposal, so some municipalities. Uh, think that's a no, because it's subsurface or it's, or it's, it's a septic flow.
Okay, so will liquid wastes? If yes, no, but you've answered the question, so. Um, because it's subsurface, you think it's really a no? Okay, all right, I'm just, I'm trying.
It's just a health department.
Like liquid waste, as in those that get contained and then removed, not naturally infiltrated through a septic system?
Some municipalities say yes, some say no. We, I just put down that.
Okay, page seven. And this is, um, we're into the J's under operation. So now. Gets back to the issue of the road. Will proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic? Above present levels or generate substantial new demand for transportation facilities or services? Now applicant has checked no.
Right.
But here's the thing, if you go down to, then it says if yes. And then you respond to little Roman numeral I, double I, triple I, four or five. Five, under that says, if the proposed action includes any modification of existing roads. Comma, creation of new roads or change in existing access described, so. I guess I can see why you would wanna characterize. That the action wouldn't result in a substantial increase in traffic above the present. But you are building a road, so if you don't have a road now. It seems to me that an addition of the road is something that's.
Caused by additional traffic.
Yeah, that, that's substantially different. And in fact. Five says, if the proposed action, this is a proposed action, includes any modification of existing roads, creation of new, describe it. So I think. I feel that, I think, I think that the road should be described there.
Cause I'm, I'm building a common driveway. It's on a road.
It's not a road.
When we looked at it, it's just, it's just a, a driveways.
But doesn't the, um, information from the fire department say that it's gonna be called? Uh, Green Tree Commons and then underneath it, it's gonna say private road?
It's just, it's just a, a, it's, it's how they do nine one one. It's, it's, it's how they identify. A common driveways in that manner. That was my understanding from our meetings with them when they, when they assigned that.
Yeah, and that was the issue in Heritage with, with the mismatch of names, right? Because Heritage are all private roads technically. And then the, my understanding of the issue was the E nine one system had trouble identifying them. So we, they had to come up with a way that they can be, uh, identified.
As a common driveway, that's why the word is commons. So it's Green Tree. Commons is basically how they identify. It's a common driveway off of existing road.
But it also said private, that it was gonna say underneath the private road. So from a legal standpoint, this. Page seven J is not, does not address this because it's considered a driveway and not a road. Is that, is that?
Correct.
That's, I'm just asking my attorney. Yeah.
Change in track. Because I think what you're saying is, as it exists, there's no traffic.
Yes.
And now you're going to have the homeowners, the trucks and stuff, so it's, it is. I guess, is there another category for that?
Well, or change in existing access, creation of new roads or change in existing access. So change in existing access. Yes.
Now, if, if the applicant had checked yes, that's gonna trigger a traffic study, right? Potentially for us to.
No, we, we did a traffic study.
What's that?
We already did, we did a traffic generation analysis already, yes, for both in construction and, and, and during operations as well.
Where do you have that in E A F? I think that would help.
Yeah, I, I think we looked at the words significant impact and we didn't feel there was because we're only generating three trips. And we're very low in regards to both the, the Green Tree Road and the, and the intersecting. Roadways were insignificant in regards to that increase. So when we evaluate them. Uh, that's how we look at it.
But it's, it's ultimately for the board to determine whether it is significant or not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Do you recall when you submitted that, uh, the traffic?
Yeah, it's a, it was, it was a separate package.
Did you, did you, um. When I was on a site there, did you measure the width of a green tree, a road? Did you get the width of that road?
I can get, I, I did not measure it. I can get that for you.
No, no, the reason I bring it up is that that looked like when I was on it. One of the widest roads I've ever seen in Somers. It looks, it looks about, I know it's at twice the width of any road in Heritage Hills. I also think that Vicki was right in the idea that an H O A should be a part of the. Establishment of these three houses, because that will do away with this so-called extra garbage. Cause I know that where we have an H O A, if somebody brings out extra garbage that's not considered recyclables. Or, or household garbage. The H O A can very easily, it's, which is, that kind of garbage is only collected twice a year. By city carding or whatever carding company they're gonna use. The, uh, we've, we've always had people remove any excess garbage that they bring. That doesn't qualify as recyclable or household garbage. So an H O A would be an important addition to the, uh, conditions on the, on the house, those.
Three houses. The only statement I have to make is, uh, we are below a threshold for an H O A, so typically it's a homeowner's agreement. Uh, because, um, uh, uh, state law is, they don't want everyone to have H O As. And so we're such a low count. I mean, we, I don't think we qualify for an H O A, but homeowner's agreements, uh, we've got. Lots of legal precedent for those and we have projects we've used in the past.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I think my reasoning, uh, Bruce, was to. For lack of a better term, compel the owners to agree on one service and not. Choose two or three different services to minimize. Travel. And I think that, um. People will always put out more garbage than they're supposed to, prop it up, whatever, and I would rather not see it, um, have it be an eyesore for somebody else.
As a general statement, we'll, we'll just take these, I was trying to address multiple items. So we will take the, uh, of these, uh, enclosures and move them to a common place. Where the garbage truck can do a K turn and be out of sight. It's not a problem.
Okay.
And we'll have one service provider make it go away.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, so, uh, in the package that I provided you, um, there was a. A page from the secret handbook that talks about reasonableness.
Yes, I know.
And, and so how do you evaluate these things, like what you're talking about with the additional truck traffic or, or vehicle traffic? And then, uh, on the E A F part two is under impact item number thirteen, impact on transportation. And I don't wanna go over this tonight, but that, those, when you start to look at that, that's how you, again, begin to evaluate. What's substantial and what's an impact.
Yes, yes, but I think on the, on the front part where the applicant has filled it out, I'm still just.
Yep.
Would like them to. Their answers, I think, that should be here. Continuing with J. Number eight, will the proposed action include plans for pedestrian or bicycle accommodations for connecting? Connections to existing pedestrian or bicycle routes? And nothing is checked. Yet you have on your plan the walkway for pedestrians. So. I just. Think that you could revisit J and I don't think it's completely answered and that's my own opinion.
Okay.
I don't. I just don't feel those questions are answered. I don't.
We'll take care of it.
Please.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I think the, uh. Part of the, the frustration with the E A F form is that it asks a specific question. Will the proposed action result in a, in a substantial increase? And if you mark it no, then you don't go back and you look at those other questions that are below. Unless he had marked it yes, then he would have had to. Looked at those, those specific questions, but I think because of the discussion tonight, even though he marked it no, he should come back with. Uh, with a response, a written response to those specific questions, even though it, it. The comment may be marked no to begin with, but there are other issues like the pedestrian. So I think that's one way. Of addressing the, your concern about making sure there's enough information, you're making an informed decision.
Thank you.
And, and would you repeat again that alternate proposal that you just made?
In regards to garbage cans?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we're.
Turn it around so everybody can see what the proposal is.
Okay, yep. So to address the issues of a, a garbage collection for the proposed three lots. We're gonna do two things. Our homeowner's agreement will include a, a paragraph which defines that the. Uh, future homeowners of the three lots will mutually agree on one single provider of garbage collection. Uh, who will be servicing all three houses simultaneously. That'll result in one garbage truck trip a week. Uh, and then, uh, it, it also, uh, we will relocate, uh, some, um. Common garbage collection, uh. common garbage collection, uh, containers, uh, to a site, uh, which is, uh, on our property. Uh, and it'll be buffered, uh, beyond our rain garden. Uh, so that, um, it'll be one spot the truck will arrive to and then pick up the appropriate garbage. Uh, the post office, uh, will contact the, um, the posters, of course, to figure out the best spot they wanna put it. Uh, but, uh, we were trying to keep it, uh, on the side away from the trail we have, because you can't reach the trail from your car because there's a fence in between yourself and the trail. So we had to put it on the, on the right side or northern side of the mailboxes, so you could get the mail as you drive in, basically.
I have a, I have a question for council, uh, regarding the HOAs. Um, I, I was under, it was briefly mentioned, I was under the impression that there was a minimum requirement um, of homes to create or mandate an HOA. Does the town have the ability to say, hey, in this project, in order for us to make the approvals, we ha- you have to create an HOA?
I think, uh, uh, I, I think the town can, not the town, but this board will have that ability, or the town board itself. And the HOA is going to be necessary in this case for all the reasons you, you've heard. Um, you know, you have, you know, the, uh, your selection of garbage, I guess there's three or four that are permitted, you know, and this happens in, in the time of Somers. So what could happen is you could have the three of them coming at different times, any time after six o'clock in the morning, you could have, you know, three different ones coming. So you, and you have other, other reasons why you would have an HOA, most particularly, you want it in a deed so that the maintenance is taken care of. Otherwise, you have a disaster.
Right.
Because, uh, people do, do, unless the mechanism is in place, you could have a disaster as far as who's gonna take care of the roadway. And that has to, that, that is something which is in two ADA, they have to design the road, you know, and we're not talking two ADA four, Reguma two ADA says, when the building permit can be issued. In this case, they have a mapped road, but that road has to be done to your satisfaction. It says there, the planning board's satisfaction. So to do that, you need to have maintenance because the town's not gonna come in and do that.
Got it. So then, so then technically we can require that.
Yes.
Now, the applicant referred to this as a homeowner's agreement. Explain that to me, and is that something that can be dissolved down the road?
No, not if it's in the deed.
So it must be in the deed.
It'll be in the deed.
Correct. That's correct.
Be in all three deeds.
Yes.
Okay, and cannot be taken out.
Okay, brilliant. And then from an enforcement standpoint, to ensure that, uh,
that.
Where does that fall? Under who, like, whose responsibility is it to ensure?
So let's, let's assume, you know, it's all hypothetical.
Of course.
So nothing happens and a dangerous s- uh, situation occurs, then it's a, a problem for the building department and in code enforcement. Okay? Uh, there, there's state regulations, there's a state building code and fire protection code. If that's violated, charges can be brought by the building department.
If I may, I, I, I own a bunch of HOAs. They're LLCs typically, so basically they don't have any real assets. It's better to have the homeowner's, you know, homeowner's agreement, because then you basically can go right to their property and they're responsible personally. Uh, HOA is held by an LLC.
Right, which can be dissolved as well.
Right, technically, yes. But, but homeowner's agreement cannot, because it's, it's in the deeds. They're unhooked personally. It's stronger, uh, for something like this.
Also, your code enforcement, um, Chris, your sort of code enforcement individual can, uh, can go like, again, in an example in Heritage Hills, when a, when a private, uh, piece of property starts piling uh, gravel, it's ten feet high on the road, the, uh, code enforcer, uh, if they do their job, and if they're called, they can come and say, you have to remove that. This is not an appropriate use of the land. In the same way, if you pile, uh, construction material next to the garbage cans, code enforcement can come and tell the, uh, homeowner's agreement that that has to be removed immediately. So that's, that's, that's easily done.
Jerry, when you were answering Chris's question just now, you used the phrase mapped road. And so I just wanted to circle back to two ADA and its contemplation of mapped road.
Two ADA has four different sections.
Right.
Two ADA is when, indeed, the bottom line two ADA is when can a building inspector issue a building permit?
Mm-hmm.
And it gives certain situations. So when we had first is two ADA subdivision four. There's no, it, there's no access existing to that property. It has to be created by open development. That's the process that the, uh, that we're going through here. Okay? Now, some, 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 the, the project, I guess it was, it's Olive. They have a road that's accessed, that's on a map or a subdivision, either a subdivision or a town map. So those, those are different, different two ADAs.
Okay.
That exist. But two ADA is just, when can the building inspector, it's, building inspector give a, uh, a permit? In this case, he's gotta go through the rigmarole of, uh, having a, the, the town board hear this matter. The case before, that's not necessary because it's on a map.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, listening to your response, that the issue of the mapped or not mapped road. Okay, thank you.
Steve, I had a quick question. What's the difference between what he's gonna put down? I, I thought that this new material out here is a pervious surface. Isn't it?
The, the grass creek is, uh, um, like an open, uh, uh, grass.
I mean, I, I know what it looks like, but this is considered pervious, isn't it?
By the DEP for this purpose, yes.
Okay, but not, not wetlands?
So the.
It would not qualify for wetlands application?
I'm just not sure I understand the question.
I mean, it was, couldn't he put what we have right out here? Down?
Ah, um, the pervious asphalt.
Yeah.
Um, have, do you have experience with the DEP on, with that? I don't believe it.
They say the word NO.
Yes.
That answers that question. Okay. Curious.
Yeah, yes, it's. That's, uh, that's very labor intensive to keep it permeable.
Yeah.
And they found that no one was keeping track of it. It is in the eighties, early nineties. It was, it, it lasted for about three years.
Oh.
That was the end of that.
If you don't blow the leaves and.
Yeah, yeah.
The tough application.
It fills in the.
Any other board member comments? Um, staff, anybody want to add? All right. I guess we'll see you next month.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Oh. Our next, our next meeting is, um, March eighth.
March eighth.
Twenty twenty-three, entertain a motion to, uh, adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.